Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our Board of Education meeting this evening. It is Tuesday, February 6th of 2024. I'd like to start the meeting by inviting Ms. Michelle Barber to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We get to begin our meeting tonight with a great student performance, so I'm going to invite Ms. Shanda Stanger to come forward and she'll introduce our performing group.
Good evening, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Board members and Superintendent C. I am pleased to welcome West Point Junior High Madrigal Group tonight. They will be playing Cielito Lindo, which is a Spanish folk song arranged by Wilfred Fisher. The Madrigals have been, they were established the second year that West Point was opened, and it's an auditioned choir group. They've performed locally throughout northern Utah and have been recognized statewide as a featured choir for the UMEA Convention and State Honors Choir Performance. West Point Junior High has a thriving Hispanic community and Latinos in Action, and several choirs are singing in Spanish to celebrate students from that diverse background.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was so wonderful to hear from you. Ms. Price is going to come down. She has a certificate to present. We'd invite Principal Nelson to come up and join the Madrigals and your conductor up front.
I did too. I did also.
Thank you, Madrigals. That was a great way to start our meeting. We appreciate you coming tonight and sharing your talents. We're going to go ahead and move to the public comment period of our meeting. We appreciate those that signed up. We've had a sign up out in the lobby prior to the meeting, and the speakers will be recognized and given an opportunity to speak for a couple minutes to the board. It's not an opportunity to air complaints concerning bidding contracts or employment or personnel, and we don't take comments regarding individual student issues. So I'll go ahead and invite our public first commenter is Mara Hammer.
President Mumford and the board, thank you for giving us this opportunity. When you said not to vent, and it's the legislative session though, it's so hard not to vent. So in light of all the frustration that is coming your way, I just wanted to send some love and support. I've had the opportunity and the privilege to be able to read through and judge some of the Best of Davis candidates, and I'm just in awe at the people who work for this district and the quality of people you have and the people who go above and beyond every day in all of their jobs. And as the librarians, as the counselors, as, it is all, all the different people that come together to work to help support the students in Davis School District. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the quality of people that you have working for you and their love and dedication to the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. Thank you for the work you do with the PTA. You've got me excited to find out who our Best of Davis winners are. It sounds like we've got some great nominations this year as always. Thank you. Okay, Board, we're going to proceed with our information items. We'll start with Ms. Price updating us from the foundation and then Mr. Robinson about USBA.
All right. So I'm just going to do a quick holiday report. The foundation did all their calculations and more than 6,500 students received services through the foundation and its partners during the holiday season. $642,000 in goods and funds were donated to provide coats, shoes, holiday gifts for most of our vulnerable students. And I'm, we all, or most of us got to participate in some of those activities, and it's just uplifting, and we're just so grateful for those who are so generous with their donations for the foundation. On January 23rd, the foundation was honored for the Boston Scientific and Intermountain Health Gives Back Program, and they were awarded about $60,000 to support our teen centers and the construction of our teen living center. And we're honored to be recognized and supported by two incredible organizations. And then we just want to say thank you to Young Automotive Group for hosting the Cast a Spell on Hunger event on February 3rd, and hundreds of families attended that event. And we also want to thank them for their support through the Kind Fund. In 2023, they partnered with the foundation and provided basic essentials to 1,092 students totaling $176,796 in donations. And we, if we ever want to participate in that, we can. We can just reach out to Young Automotive Group and let them know that we're interested, and we can get gift cards and go and do some shopping. And I haven't done it yet, but I need to put it on my calendar, but it is something that we can participate in just as board members, but also community members. And then mark your calendars for the Unified Sports Basketball Tournament next week on February 15th at Bountiful High. I believe it starts at 10:00 or 11:00? Okay. We can get the exact time for you, but put it on your calendar. Oh, it is. You, sorry, it does begin at 10:00. It's a wonderful day to just see these students and athletes unifying, just, it's amazing. And I know you guys have had opportunities to go to other sporting events, and so I encourage you to go to the basketball tournament. And we just want to thank Murdoch Family Foundation for providing the funding that makes this event possible. And then the state tournament will be held at the University of Utah on Friday, March 8th. And that's also a great event and opportunity to see the different teams throughout the state, the high school teams. We're excited to announce that we have new Unified Sports events this month. There's elementary snow shoeing, and we want to say thanks to the Burton family for their generous donation to make that possible. And if you're interested in attending that, that activity to build unity and belonging in our elementary schools, it's on February 29th. And this event will be hosted at Lagoon, and the morning will be filled with snow shoeing, hot chocolate, and the building of skill and friendships. So that will be another great opportunity. And then we're preparing to open our eighth teen center in Davis School District, and that will be at Syracuse High, and that will be on Thursday, March 7th at 3:30 PM. And we'll be able to celebrate the opening of that facility. And that is it for now. So thank you so much for the foundation, for all that they do, for our students in the school district, and for those who generously donate to the foundation so that we can make all of these activities and things possible.
Thank you, President. Board, just to bring you up to date on a couple things, I left the folder there for each of you at your desk. Each Friday, as you're all aware, we have a JLC meeting, Joint Legislative Committee, that meets at the Granite School District offices. And we have representatives from the Utah School Board Association Board of Directors, along with our superintendents throughout the state, and business administrators attend that as well. This committee has functioned for many years. It is a time where we review the bills that are pending. Some of them have, at times have passed the week that we meet, and we review those as well. But one of the things to make you aware or to remind you of is, from that Joint Legislative Committee, a subcommittee was formed of nine of us, eight school board members from throughout the state, representation pretty much along the Wasatch Front, a couple of the rural areas, and then Lexi Cunningham, who is the executive over the Superintendent's Association, works at the School Board, Utah School Board Association as well. And we meet every Tuesday at 2:00 PM on a Zoom call, that committee of nine. The purpose of the committee of nine is we are called the Communication Committee, which is, we're trying to put together some ways that we can communicate to the public and to the media, as well as the legislature, on items that are obviously focused on the educational community. I don't know if the terminology is interesting, Ms. Hammer, based on part of what you said, it might be a little disappointing to realize that in a state where we have, as you received information from me this week, we've been identified nationwide as the fifth best education system in the country, out of all the states. And yet, in the first seven days of the legislative session, there were over 100 education bills submitted. And not all of those bills, in fact, the majority of those bills are set up to, you know, to improve education, but in a way that other people interpret what improving education means. Too many times, it really ends up becoming more of a burden on our teachers and our administrators, which is where Ms. Gerard and other members of leadership in our organization and also in the superintendents work every single day to try to help work through some of those. But there is a lot of work going on, on a daily basis, with a lot of people to try to intervene where possible to communicate and to try to make this situation a little bit better. Back in 2015, there were about 94 or 84 bills that had to do with education. In the last five, six years, there's well over 150 each session. So it's a challenge for us, but there are people that are trying to stay up with that. And I think it's important, part of what I would share with you tonight, is as individual board members, you know, to review what's going on, and if there are things that you see that you'd like to communicate with local legislators, I would encourage you to do that. The more factual we can be, rather than emotional, is much better. Because as we, as we compare, maybe the cost, for instance, the voucher program, to what that does to take away from 637,000 kids in the state, where that funding maybe ends up not being as equitable as maybe we think it ought to be, those are the kind of things that we can communicate. So in the, in the folder that I left you, many of you received this last year. It's just a worksheet that I worked on with Mr. Leffle regarding the potential funding to schools. If the voucher money that was allocated last year was given to the schools for just the area of mental health, just, just that area, focusing on that. The second thing that's in your folder there is from the Utah Citizens Council. These people have done a lot of work in relationship to potentially what the change in the constitution might mean for education. I shared that with you, so you can kind of review that if the, if the opportunity again presents itself for you to maybe talk to legislators, just be a little bit more up to speed on the negativity of what might be created by that change. And then finally, the, we continue to hear things about critical race theory. I ran across an article that was back in 2022, but it has information in it. If you are approached in relationship to that particular issue, subject, then again, there are some things there that might be of your advantage in being able to communicate. So I would, the last thing I would just say is, if you have things that you'd like me to take on Fridays to the JLC, just let me know. I know some of you have come down and participated, and you're always welcome to come. But I think we need to realize, particularly with the constitutional change, as board members in 2024, this decision will have a generational effect. This isn't just for next year. This is, this, a constitutional change is going to last, you know, possibly forevermore until another, somebody else has an idea that they might want to change it again, but it doesn't happen very often, as you know. So look at that in detail, make sure that you're up to speed on what that really means, and ask any questions that you might have when we get the answers. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thanks for your steady work at the legislature representing our board and to Ms. Gerard as well, and other board members have participated, but these two really take the lion's share of that on a weekly basis, so thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start with Ms. Barber for Board reports.
I've had a great couple weeks, meeting with several community councils in my area and on the FEET committee, which we'll look at tonight, so that recommendation. We had a flyer, I was so happy, from one of my schools for Chinese New Year program that is actually this Friday. So come if you can. It's really cool to see. The Chinese immersion program puts it on, it's open to everybody and really fun. And yeah, been interesting following the legislative process, so thank you, John, for that. That's all for me.
Thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Price.
All right. We had a finance committee meeting the last month. I was able to participate in some mock interviews at West Point Junior High, and that was really fun to see the ninth grade students and just ask questions and pretend like I wanted to hire them, and I was really impressed with the quality of applicants that, that I got to meet with. And I also attended a community council meeting at West Point Junior High as well to get a little input on cell phones and just to hear the parent perspective on that. I was able to attend an evaluate schools meeting at Syracuse Junior High. We had a Communities That Care Key Leader Meeting a week or two ago. I went to Lakeside Elementary and was able to judge the finalists for their amazing shake. And it was a really great opportunity to see three students, they were the finalists, but the, this whole year, the school, they, they participate in the Ron Clark Academy. And some of the things that they've been working on this year, at least their fifth and sixth graders, is kind of the life skills and gaining confidence, being able to public speak, being able to meet people, teach, just all of those great things that we want our students to be able to learn. And it was just impressive to see these sixth grade girls and give their presentation. And it was me and John Zee and the mayor of West Point, we were the judges, but it was, it was a hard choice, but it was just impressive to see, see these kids and just great things happening in our elementary schools that are helping our students. Attended a JLC meeting. We, we all attended, well, not all of us. Most of us attended the High Reliability Schools Summit in San Antonio last week, and that was a great opportunity to learn more about high reliability schools and what's happening in our district and being able to get behind that and support our, our leaders and our schools in that. I attended the Region One Swim Meet on Saturday, and also the Weber State Cheer Competition on Saturday. So that was fun to see our different schools represented in, in both of those events.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan.
Okay. Well, I got to attend my first JLC meeting, which was extremely interesting to see that process and how, how that all works and how Bridget's running the show there. So it was great, great to be there. I also had the opportunity to visit East Lane Elementary, where we were able to honor the librarian there. I think Bridget might mention that as well. She's great. And then I also got to go to a Cook Elementary Community Council, which was fun. Cook Elementary is dear to my heart because that's where all my kids went to elementary school. And they showed me the progress that's being made on the new office there, and everybody's super excited about that and are grateful for that. And then lastly, I got a chaperone at the preference dance at Syracuse High School, which was also a very enlightening experience to see the kids there and socializing and having a good time, that me and my husband could be there to help keep them in line. So, thank you.
Okay, while everybody else was hanging out in Texas, I was in Washington DC and had the opportunity to attend the Equity Symposium and the Advocacy Conference with other Utah School Board Association officers. And it was a great experience and learned a lot and had the opportunity to meet with many of our congressmen and advocate for public education and things that we need, and at some point, I'll report on that. While you guys talk to me about the conference that you attended, so that was a really great experience. And yes, Kristin and I, and Superintendent Linford had a great visit at East Lane Elementary, and that's near and dear to my heart because that's where my kids went to elementary school. And we did get to honor Janine Pettit, who is an amazing media specialist there. And just watching the children come into that room, they love her and they love that environment. And it was just great to be able to honor her with our award of being the one, and she really is the one to many of those students there. So that was a great experience. And the rest of the time, yeah, I've been hanging out at the Capitol. And just to add to what, the work that Mr. Robinson has done, and we appreciate him. If you would like to look at the bill tracker, you can look on the USSA site, which is the superintendent's site, or the USBA site, and look under advocacy on both of those sites. And you can see the bills that we've discussed. There are so many bills, as has been mentioned, that we don't even have time to discuss, all the education bills, but the ones that we have and have, that have risen to the top, we've taken a position on. So if you'd like to see the positions that JLC has taken, look for those, the bill tracker on both of those websites.
Thank you, Ms. Gerard. Ms. Powell.
So, yeah, I went to San Antonio with a lot of these guys and really enjoyed being part of that and getting to know a lot of the leaders in our district and getting to know a little bit more about Marzano and the theories of educational instruction. Kristin and I, or Ms. Hogan and I, as part of the Board Communications Work Group, we looked at the board website, and our communications department did a great job. We really appreciate Terry and Amy Sather, is it Sather or Sather? She, they did a great job. They really did a great job, and I suggest you guys take a look at it. It's streamlined, and if you have any suggestions, let me or Kristin or Ms. Hogan or Communications Department know. Let's see, I visited an SB classroom at Creekside Elementary. That was interesting. I've never, I wasn't familiar with that, to see how that's working. And that's, my understanding, that's fairly new in their district. Just been going on for a couple of years, these SB programs. So that was interesting. I was invited to pronounce for spelling bee at Heritage Elementary. That was really fun. I wasn't in charge for once, so that took a lot of pressure off, but it was fun to be part of that. Let's see. Trying to keep track of what's going on in legislation. I have people contacting me all the time. And keeping up with patron communications. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I just spend time with the legislature. That's my life. That's it.
You covered it. Thank you. Brianna.
It's Counselor Appreciation Week at my school, so I just wanted to recognize all the amazing counselors that go out of their way to help the students. They're really great people.
Thank you. We do have some really great counselors across the district. I noticed that on the social media this week, seeing some great photos of our counselors. I appreciate them. For my board report tonight, I'm going to share an information item. At our previous workshop, we discussed the
At our previous workshop, we discussed the, the proposal by Mr. Robinson to set up an athletic commission with some work to create a coach's code of conduct. Bridget and I met with the superintendent, and we kind of came up with a structure. And so I'd like to explain and kind of outline how that athletic commission will work. It's an ad hoc committee focused on creating supportive and safe conditions for extracurricular athletics. And it will be composed of two school board appointees. And I'd like to appoint Mr. Robinson and Ms. Price to serve in that role. And the superintendent is selecting three appointees. It will be an assistant superintendent, a secondary director, and a district athletic director. That group of five will then convene and confer with parents, administrators, coaches, and stakeholders. And the expected outcome is a coaching code of conduct, parent expectations document in some form, and possible training recommendations. We, based on the discussions we've had, we would expect they'll use existing board policy, our board, or our employee handbook, that's part of our negotiated agreement, the Utah High School Activities Association Policies and Guidelines, and recommendations from national associations. And we'd hope that they could report back in May in a workshop setting, so that we could be ready for summer implementation for the, and then implement for the 24, 25 school year. So that's the plan for the athletic commission, and we look forward to hearing back on that in May from President Robinson and Ms. Price. And then I'll turn the time over to Dr. Linford.
Okay, thank you, Board. You've been busy. It's good to hear your adventures. Couple things. Josh, who's not here tonight, is, he's actually serving at Northridge High School tonight. A welcoming freshman, so we excuse him. I wanted to begin just a quick superintendent's report with one of our, one of our, our critical members of our team is celebrating a birthday tonight. I just want to recognize Rick Astle tonight. Well, everyone wants to sing, just give him a wave right here. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Happy Birthday.
Yeah, there he is, yeah. What a special birthday this is for him. And then, a few fun things with our, with some of our employees, and we may want to think about recognizing some of these folks at a later date. But Lindsay Porter was recognized with the Counseling and Career Development Professional Award at the Utah ACT Conference this past week, so congratulations to Lindsay. She represents us so well. Todd Campbell was awarded the Outstanding Music Educator of the Year for this past year for the UMEA. Now, the UMEA, they, they wait for a full year to be through, and then they, they recognize them the next year. So this is for last year, so congratulations to Todd. That's a state level award. And then just, some of you have heard of this, but just a few things. I think we're the best dancers in the whole state in Davis County. Farmington High School won the 6A state championship this past weekend. Layton High was third, and Davis High was fourth. So that's more than our fair share, if you're keeping track. And then, yep, and then Vumont High School in, won the 5A state championship in drill, first place, and Bountiful High took second, so really-
Syracuse took eighth.
Oh, Syracuse took eighth. Well, now I feel like I should mention everyone, but, so, that's really, eighth is, eighth is pretty amazing as well. So a pretty special group of talented people. We're just dancers in Davis County. Really impressed with these young women who work incredibly hard. Those of us that have been in schools and who spent time with drill, just the toughest athletes we have. They work incredibly hard, and they work a lot of hours, so just want to celebrate them a little bit. We'll bring them maybe another time as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Linford. We're gonna go ahead and move to our consent items. Before we proceed with that, I asked Ms. Cook if she would just do a quick summary of the process for supplemental materials. That's a newer state code that we're in compliance with, so I wanted to make sure we're all familiar with that as we proceed with those consent items.
With the passing of SB 55, it changed the process a little bit, which, well, a lot. It means that you approve all curricular materials. So with the supplemental materials that I send to you, they have gone through the process of coming through a request from a teacher, or a school, or a district employee, and we take it through the review process. And then it goes to the open house process. So we have two open houses. We have those regularly scheduled every other Thursday. We hold them virtually on Zoom. Our record attendance is about one parent per open house. And so, but it's great, and I'm getting to know a lot of great parents in Davis School District, ones that I'm tagged, like, I need you for this committee, and I need you for that committee, and it's been a really good experience. And then we bring them to you for approval. If we had any public comment at the open house, or if we've had any emails, I would also include those. We've not had hardly any public comment, other than some questions that a parent may have asked, and no emails that have come to the DSD curriculum email. There's also a software piece that we include, and the software piece goes through a little bit different process. We use Learn Platform as our repository of all of those approvals. And with a software piece, it has to go first to data privacy. And to Mr. John Hyatt, he's our data privacy officer. So he checks to see if there is an agreement already through USBE and the state. And then, if it is, then we can go ahead and we can sign that. If not, then we need to work with the company to get that data privacy secured. After we approve data privacy, then it comes to either curriculum, teaching and learning, special education, CTE, or the SEL office. And personnel in those offices then sign off on those curriculum pieces, either approve or deny. And then it goes to purchasing. Do we have a contract in place? If there's not a contract in place, then we work to establish a contract. So when the school or district goes to purchase, that there is a contract that has been established. Then after that, it goes to the IT department to make sure that it's going to work within our systems, typically authenticated through Clever and Canvas. And if that is approved, then we say awesome, and we put it on the list to bring to you. And that's kind of gone in waves. Some months we have a lot, and some we don't have very many. And in this last round, we actually had quite a few materials that were to be approved. So you wouldn't see any of those software that didn't contain content. If they don't contain content, and we follow the process, and they're approved, then we just go ahead and approve them. You would have to approve everything that contains learning material and content.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. So those will come through kind of consistently as consent items, and when you're reviewing those, that's the process that you can have some security knowing that they've been through before you take a look deeper. Did you have a question, Ms. Barber?
I was gonna say that was really helpful. I hadn't done one before, so, thank you. I appreciate that.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and proceed to our consent items board. Are there any items that you'd like to pull from the consent list?
Yeah, I would like to pull those. Sorry. I would like to pull number five.
Number five, okay. So then we just need a motion to approve items one through four.
I'll move that we approve consent items number one through four.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Gerard, a second by Ms. Powell, and all in favor of that, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll go to item number five then, as our first business item. And let's, we'll do a motion and a second first, and then we can open that for discussion.
I move we approve item number five, learning materials approval.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Robinson and a second by Ms. Price to approve the learning materials that were posted in the agenda. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Hogan.
Yeah, I, I just felt that, just because we received it yesterday, I personally would like a little bit more time just to be able to look through it, since I have to put my approval on it. And so that, I just wanted to put that out there.
Are you, would you like more time on all three items, like the two books and the, the web link to the SEL materials, or like the whole group?
I did have a chance to look at the books, so I'm, I am prepared to vote on those, but the SEL was a little bit more involved, and so I felt like I didn't have enough time to go through that.
Okay. So, Mr. Carter, correct me if I'm wrong here, but Ms. Hogan could request to table the, that element of, of the motion, if you'd like to.
I, I guess I need to know, is this a timely, is there a timely proponent to this?
Well, yes. The teacher is really anxious to use it with her students. So the Pika Pack is an SEL preschool and special education tool that has been approved by USBE for a pilot. And this teacher was awarded a grant to be able to purchase it. And going through this process, she's just anxious to use it. But we want to make sure that we follow the process, so we will do whatever you'd like us to do. I'm happy to tell her it will be another month.
Can you speak a little bit to like what process USBE went through to vet the, the materials?
So it's very similar to what we do here in the district. They form a committee of various stakeholders, and they take it through a review process with a rubric, looking for materials that align to Utah State standards, and review and score it to that. It received a high enough score that it was moved on into the pilot phase. So schools and districts that are wanting to pilot can go ahead and pilot that material. There is a charge for it, but they can pilot it to see if it's something that they want to continue to purchase. And like I said, this teacher received a grant and is wanting to purchase that for her students. It's very interactive, and it contains a, a component where it's not just the teacher, but a teacher can reach out to a parent or guardian and say, who would you like to connect with your student? So the teacher could put in a parent email, a grandparent email, and then they connect through video. So they are learning a skill. The kid creates a little video about, this is the skill I'm learning, and this is how I can use the skill. And then grandma and grandpa, or mom and dad can reply to that video and say, way to go. I'd love to see you use this skill here, or way, I saw you use it this way on Saturday night dinner, and I'm so proud of you. And so that's kind of the context, very skill-based, very interactive with both teacher, parent, and any other people that the parents may want to invite to participate. Most of those tend to be grandparents.
President Mumford.
Yes, Ms. Robinson.
Mr. Carter, you can help me on this, but I respect the fact that Ms. Hogan wants to wait. And I would be willing to modify my motion to approve learning materials, item number one, and to table number two to our workshop in February, to have a short business meeting, because our next business and workshop is mid, mid-March. So do you see a problem with that, Mr. Carter?
No, that would work fine.
So, President, I would amend my motion to approve the learning materials, number, item number one, book review committee recommendations, and to table item number two to our March, or excuse me, to our February workshop, to have a short business meeting prior to.
So is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have an amendment from Mr. Robinson, a second from Ms. Gerard to approve the books that were presented in the agenda, and to table the software until the workshop that we have, I believe it's February 20th. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes, and we'll add that specific item to a quick business meeting in two weeks. Thank you. Okay, next we have our business item, to approve the Head Start, early Head Start reports as presented in the packet at the recommendation of Mr. Robinson, who serves on that committee.
We'll need a motion for that one.
Just to clarify, that report now is reviewed by Mr. Zerbakan.
Oh, okay.
With, in his absence, I would move to approve the Head Start, early Head Start report.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Mr. Robinson.
A second.
And a second from Ms. Barber. Any questions or comments about that in your packet? Just for the board's clarification, I did some training this afternoon with Head Start, and so Mr. Robinson will continue to attend Policy Council, and then I'll be the signer on Head Start documents moving forward. So all in favor of the Head Start, early Head Start reports, please say aye.
Aye.
That one's unanimous. Okay, next we have our school fees, and I'd like to invite Mr. Tanner to come up prior to the motion, and he can present on that process.
All right, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, and School Board, Superintendent Linford. We had, I don't say a great time, but it was a pretty fun time, meeting as a committee over the last couple of months, and appreciate Board Member Michelle Barber's participation in that, and her insight and support was very helpful. And I was just gonna show the committee, there we go, who served on the committee. So we had five parents serve on that committee, as you can see. People from our county department, legal, OEO, directors, different curriculum areas and things like that. So it was a, a large committee, and just had some great insight. And you'll see in your packet that you've been given some of the proposed changes. And so I can go through them point by point, but I'll just ask you if you have any questions, and see if we can accept this on first reading, so, or not accept it, but present this at first reading, so.
Perfect. Mr. Robinson has a question.
Mr. Tanner, under the Section 9, the activity participation fee, it talks about the officer sweater. And it was, it's deleted that that's not subject to fee waivers unless required for a student's participation. So does that deletion mean it is now?
Fee waiverable.
Fee waiverable. Thank you. And I think I had another question. The, the other question I had was the, tell me the increase on the travel costs. I know it's, it's, may not exceed 2,000. Where, where were we this school year with our fee schedule? Do you know offhand? It's the same?
Yeah, I don't think there was a change on that one.
Okay, good. There was not a change. Does it show a change in the? Okay.
No, I think it, it's, it, it wouldn't indicate it's a change, because it's not redlined.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
There's no change in the travel.
Okay.
And there's been no complaints on that from last year. Seems like everyone's able to get, you know, the things that they need to get to and stuff like that with that amount of money.
Okay.
Ms. Powell, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Okay, not seeing any other questions, so with that, we can entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule on a first reading. And then that goes out and stays out for public comment for a time period, and then comes back in 30 days?
Yes, we get that sent out, and then it has to be approved by April 1st, so March.
I move, I move to approve the 2023-2024 school fee schedule on first reading.
2024-2025?
Yeah, it is incorrect on our agenda.
Okay, restate. I move to approve the 2024-2025 school fee schedule on first reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Ms. Powell and a second from Ms. Price to approve the 2024-2025 school year fee schedule on a first reading. Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Barber.
I just had a comment. It was really fun, actually, to be part of this. But mostly because there was a lot of participation. I was surprised how big that committee was, and really well done. And I was surprised, not surprised, it was really good to see how thoughtful the committee was. But I also learned a lot about the plans have to be submitted for fees. So they have to show exactly how fees are being used. So even when you increase them, it doesn't mean you're automatically raising every single fee. You're just allowing responsible use of that, so that was really good to see. So it was a good experience for me, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gerard, did you have a question? Just ready to vote. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Okay, we've got some capital improvements next on our schedule. I'll turn that to Mr. Carter.
Thank you, President. It is that time of the year again. So first up, a couple roof replacements. Whole Elementary, their roof was installed in 1980. It's time to, to replace it. I will put that out to bid, and it's our recommendation. And you have this attachment on your desk. It didn't get included in the, in the board packet, but it was, it's in front of you today, tonight. So it's our recommendation that that contract be awarded to Utah Elite Roofing in the amount of $642,930.
I'll move that we-
I'll move that we accept and approve the bid and award it to Utah Elite Roofing for $642,930. $642,930. Scared you, didn't I, Craig? For the Holt Elementary roof replacement.
Second that. Thank you. So we have a motion from Ms. Gerard and a second from Ms. Hogan to approve the Holt Elementary Roof Replacement Bid to Utah Elite Roofing. Any questions or comments on that one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next one, Mr. Carter at Leighton Elementary.
Okay, Leighton Elementary roof, a 1984 vintage roof, needs to be replaced as well. And it is our recommendation that that contract be awarded to Utah Elite Roofing in the amount of $570,930.
I move that we award the Leighton Elementary Roof Replacement Project to Utah Elite Roofing in the amount of $570,930.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Ms. Hogan and a second from Ms. Price to approve the Leighton Elementary Roof Replacement with the contract awarded to Utah Elite Roofing. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And one more, this one's Valley View Vestibule.
Yeah, so if you're familiar with Valley View Elementary, it has an exterior stairwell on the south side of the building. That was, that's been there since the school opened and it is deteriorating and actually falling apart. So it's our recommendation that we award a contract to Achieve Contracting that will go in there and enclose it and, and enclose the vestibule so it, or the stairwell so it will become a vestibule and better protect the kids and the materials from the elements. So again, Achieve Contracting in the amount of $318,515.
I'll move that we approve and accept the bid by Achieve Contracting for $318,515 to build a vestibule, vestibule, vestibule at Valley View Elementary School.
I'll second. Thank you. So we have a motion by Ms. Gerard and a second by Ms. Barber to approve the vestibule at Valley View Elementary and award that contract to Achieve Contracting. Any questions, Board? Mr. Carter, just for my frame of reference, is the, that's where they have a, like the ADA access, is in that?
I'm not sure, actually.
Area? Okay, I just wondered if that would get contained inside the vestibule.
I can get back to you.
But I can talk to Mr. Payne about that. Because I know that's been challenging, like when they have to utilize that, they have to take kids outside into the elements to get inside that exterior elevator. Okay. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to award the contract to Achieve, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And our last one is the Freeport fueling station.
So this is one that none of us want to do, but we're required to do it from, by the state. It's a state fuel site that we use and other government entities are able to use it as well. But our tanks currently are underground and now we need to replace those, pull them out, clean up the, the area and, and develop a new fueling station that'll be just across where the current ones are, it'll be just to the east in that compound that we have currently, if you're familiar with it, out there. A lot of maintenance vehicles are parked there and some of their equipment. So there'll be above-ground tanks for diesel and unleaded fuel that will be, the tanks are not the tanks, but the pumps will be covered. And that, these have to be done by the end of fiscal, end of the calendar year '24. So it's our recommendation that that contract be awarded to RNO Construction in the amount of $3,101,200.
I move that we award the bid to RNO, RNO Construction for $3,101,200.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion from Mr. Robison and a second from Ms. Gerard to award the contract to RNO Construction for the Freeport fueling station replacement. Any questions regarding that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Board, is there anything I've missed before we adjourn and go into a closed session? Okay, without any further comment, we're going to go ahead and take a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of personnel and litigation.
I move that we go into closed session for the purpose of personnel and litigation.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Ms. Powell, a second from Mr. Robison. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Barber?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Gerard?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Robison?
Yes.